Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for this evening. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. This is the introduction of local law three, two thousand nineteen, amending chapter one eighty-five towing. At this time, I'm open to the floor for anybody who'd like to comment about this. Just for the public's understanding, the local law three, amending chapter one eighty-five, has to do with the towing ordinance that we had passed back in two thousand seventeen. At the time, we had added the use of personal checks as a form of payment to the towing companies. We've come to realize that's become an issue and should not be part of the, a form of payment. Therefore, we've amended our chapter to reflect that we will, that they do not have to accept personal checks. They will accept credit cards, debit cards, cash and so forth, but no personal checks. So, and that's what this is about. If nobody would like to discuss that or have any questions about it, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, thank you and welcome to the Tuesday, February seventeenth Village of Monroe trustees board meeting. If we could all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you and welcome to the February nineteenth meeting. Just to take note, the egress is to the rear of the building exit and over here. First order of business department reports have the trustees had an opportunity to review.
Yes.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the department reports as submitted.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Second order of business is resignation of part-time parking enforcement officer Christopher Antonacci. Trustee who?
In a memo from Chief Mel Kiori, he writes, he asks us to accept the resignation of Christopher Antonacci, who submitted his resignation effective March twentieth, two thousand nineteen. He's accepted a position as a police officer with the city of Newburgh Police Department and he will begin their academy in April. We wish him the best in his future endeavors and much safety. I put them, I put that in the form of a motion.
A second, please.
I'll second it. And like to say that everybody knows how much I loved him and he was fantastic at his job and he will be missed tremendously.
Ditto.
Wish him the best of luck and safe career.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, first order of business is the local law three of two thousand nineteen, amending chapter one eighty-five towing. Public hearing was held on Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen to review a proposed local law entitled, "Amending Chapter One Eighty-Five Towing." The village board finds and determines with this proposed local law that the public interest would be served by modifying chapter one eighty-five of the village code, which chapter regulates towing vehicles operating within the incorporated village. I need a motion to accept the amendment to the chapter one eighty-five towing.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions?
Nope.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Requested travel. After this February fifth, two thousand nineteen board meeting, I tabled this matter, Mayor Dwyer tabled this matter to allow for the discussion to be had with the building department regarding the scheduling of their attendance at the necessary seminars, needed to meet their twenty-four hours of continuing education credits. Based upon that, we resolved that the board of trustees approved the attendance of Assistant Building Inspector Debbie Prue to attend the New York State Building Officials Conference Tuesday, April ninth through Thursday, April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, from seven thirty a.m. to three p.m. at the Rockland Firemen's Training Center at thirty-five Fireman's Memorial Drive, Pomona, New York. The cost of the seminar is two hundred and seventy-five dollars and the village truck will be utilized for transportation. The amount will be allocated from budget line A three six two zero point four seven two zero, education, and will fulfill nineteen of the twenty-four mandatory hours required each year. Be it further resolved that the board of trustees approve the attendance of Building Inspector Jim Cox at three daily seminars beginning on March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, at the NYSBOC, known as NISBOC, Westchester Chapter, from eight thirty a.m. to three thirty p.m. located at one ninety-eight Central Avenue, White Plains, New York. The cost of the three seminars is one sixty-five and will be allocated from budget line A three six two zero point four seven two zero, education, and will also fulfill nineteen of the twenty-four mandatory hours required each year. I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order of business is the event application. Trustee who?
Yes. Two Fridays ago, I believe, the police department, the building department, trustee Ally and I met with Clerk Baxter. We went over the, the special events permit. We tied up some loose ends and made the, made the following changes to the application. So, I ask for your comments.
I think it's complete.
There is one thing that I would like to do.
Additional?
Well, no, not additionally, just to clarify under policies number two. I think this is the only thing that I neglected in our changes and that is to clarify, it reads, "The applicant agrees to be present for a pre-event and post-event inspection, site inspection, if requested by the building department. Following the event, the applicant shall be billed for any additional expenses that may have been incurred." I, that kind of sounds like we're going to charge them for something and it leaves it kind of unclear, so that's referring to any damages that may have been caused to vil, excuse me, village property. And that's not, this description is not noting that, so I'd like to include that.
Is there any, and the board, by all means, is there any opportunity where expenses, additional expenses outside of damages would be incurred? I can't.
There, there shouldn't be any opportunity for expenses outside of damages. So, the only thing that I would like to add is that may have been incurred as a result of damages or loss to village property.
So, that's just property. Are there any potential additional charges or additional police coverage?
That's all included in the application. The police department has an opportunity to cite how much support they need to give to the applicant and the event and how much that's going to cut, how much that's going to cost. The applicant is made away, aware and hear of what their responsibility for that is. Same thing happens for the Department of Public Works, how much support they have to give. And the building inspector, the building department has a section in here that addresses signs and anything else that would incur fees. So, that's all clearly listed prior to approval.
Well, highway department doesn't currently review the application and provide dollar estimates. So, if that's something that is going to be included, we need to note that that's an addition.
Yes, it's in here. All applications will be reviewed by the building department, police department, highway department and village board.
I have a question about the fifty-dollar processing fee.
Yes, yes.
Is that for things like the scare foes or the pinwheels?
As of right now, yeah, it would include everything. Every, every application that comes before the board would have to pay that fee. Now, what we do need to talk about is when we're going to enact this fee. Are we going to enact it as of any event that is being submitted for approval March first, two thousand nineteen? Or, or any other date in the future? I don't think that we should make it retroactive. I think any event that's already been submitted.
We've had two that have been submitted and approved to date, two thousand nineteen.
Approved. Well, not yet approved, only two that have been submitted, but there are still five.
No, no, but, but approved by the, by the different departments.
Only two that have been approved, yes.
So, I agree, I think going forward, you would apply this.
Right, so what date, starting at what date?
If we approve it tonight, tomorrow?
Okay.
So, it'll be immediately?
Immediately. Mm-hmm.
When new applications have come in?
So, that's for any application that is submitted tomorrow? Or, that comes before the board tomorrow and on? We have, how many is it, four applications that have not yet been approved?
Five.
Five applications that have not yet been approved. Those five, are they going to incur the fifty-dollar processing fee or are they going?
Well, they were advised, correct me if I'm wrong, they were advised that we were holding them, that we were going through a revamping of the event policy and, and the application. Am I correct?
They were advised that the board was considering revising the event application.
But they've already submitted the applic, the old application, they've submitted it. And did you collect an application fee at that time?
Well, according to this application, all fees are due. And now I can't find it.
Typically, application fees are administrative fees. So, it's supposed to cover the general cost of just the administration of the application itself. So, I think it's up to the board to decide whether to go starting afresh tomorrow and allow the pending applications to flow through, or should you try, make it retroactive to the pending applications?
My only
God bless you.
Problem with that is that some of these applications are eight months away. So, somebody that comes in with an event in six months is going to be captured here, but the person who came in eight months in advance is not. You understand? So, for me, yeah.
So, then the application fees would either be, I mean, in the past, any cost to the village would be collected at what point, after the event?
Right, to this application being defined, there was no fee policy of any kind.
But what about if you needed police coverage or?
We only had it for one event.
The only place we did have, we captured some reimbursement was through the carnival and that was through contractual obligation that we negotiated, so outside of that, there wasn't any other opportunity.
Then I would suggest that if you're going to subject all pending applications that have not yet been approved to this, that you would just call them and you need to come back in and, um, you, which is a judgment that may affect that.
Well, if we're making it effective tomorrow, that would mean that today's
Approved, department approved.
Are exempt from that.
Be exempt.
And so, the ones out there are the, the few that are waiting. There's five that are waiting. Some that start as early as May. One in May, two in, two in May, one in June, one in October, one in December. Of which, four were submitted by one applicant. One is on the agenda tonight and the other three are coming.
I have a couple of things actually before we pass this tonight that I wanted the board to, I wanted your opinions on. Debbie brought up the one about the nonprofit fee and I know we discussed this in length and we know there's an administrative fee to it, but do you think that fee, even though it's not a tremendous fee, is going to discourage any events that currently are in, in the village?
It's possible and, and that's why we need to talk about that.
And that's, that's what I wanted to hear from the board. I have another thing that I wasn't, that wasn't, maybe I missed it, trustee who, were, where and when will the fees be due?
The fees are due, so if you take a look at application procedures number three, upon approval from the village board, the applicant will remit the required application fee and applicable permit fees as well as twenty percent of estimated fees for village services at least ten days prior to the event setup day.
So, they're paying to village clerk. And the last thing I had were, I didn't see anywhere that it specified if there are vendors at the event that they need to apply for a separate vendor application.
There was reference to a separate vendor application, but we currently do not have, do we have a separate vendor application? We currently don't have
Existing event application.
So, for instance, when, when we ran Founder's Day last year, Founder's Day was approved under one special event application. I, me, as the sponsor of the event, I had all of the applications for the vendors and made sure that the, that all of the vendors had filled out the hold harmless agreements, had the insurance that stated in here. There is stipulations for every vendor to sign a hold harmless and to also supply a certificate of liability.
Is that sufficient?
That's already
That's already in, in the procedures, yep.
It won't be a complete application until that's
Okay, so any vendor on premise will, they'll submit that with the application.
Yep, they just won't have to fill out another application and pay an application fee.
Right, okay.
So, if someone comes to the clerk's window
Yep.
And wants an event application
Yep.
And it encompasses vendors to come with the applicant. She's to give out the, the vendor application as well as
She doesn't have a vendor application.
That's what I'm saying, so
It's the, it's the applicant's responsibility to collect from each vendor a hold harmless statement that has been signed and notarized as well as a certificate of liability.
And a certificate, well, depending on the vendor. So, food vendors would have DOH.
Food vendors would als, would have to, in addition to the certificate of liability, they'd also have to submit a current department of hel, Orange County Department of Health permit. And it must be Orange County, it cannot be another county.
So, we have an event like that, is that application complete, considered complete or incomplete until all of that information is gathered and at which point do I then put it through the process of building department, police department, now highway department, and then presenting it to the board for review?
So
I think the issue is that if someone is putting on an event and there are multiple vendors, they may want to get through the approval process.
Before, before soliciting vendors.
Then going out and having the vendors submit the information and attach that to the application. So, I mean, I would suggest doing it that way because otherwise, someone's, it could take a long time. They may not know all the vendors at the time they're preparing for this event.
We collected applications, we collected hold harmless agreements and certificates of liability for Founder's Day up until two days before Founder's Day.
So, do you have, I think you do, as I read it, anybody offering the hold harmless and so forth? If they're on the property for that event and they don't have that, based on your package, even at a latter date, they won't be allowed to be there.
They will not be allowed to be there if they do not have the hold harmless, definitely if they don't have the hold harmless.
Do they now have to turn those in to the clerk's office once they've been collected?
The applicant should.
The applicant, so Joe Smith is running an event with ten vendors, he has to collect all of that from the ten vendors.
He would, he would be advised.
And turn copies of that into, prior to ten days, is that what it said?
It says ten days before the event that all of that stuff needs to be.
Say the application fee has, can be paid up until ten days prior?
No, within ten, oh, yes, ten days prior to the event.
Application fee be turned in at the time that the application is turned in?
We can, we can change that.
The administrative costs, processing the application?
Typically, the, the, the application fee itself, just like if you're going to apply to the planning boards or segmentable, you pay the fee upfront. Because there's going to be work whether they go forward with the application.
Well, well, it says that actually. It says here, the applicant must submit with their completed package a fifty-dollar processing fee.
Yep, but then it, it said, it said later on in number three, which I just omitted, required application fee. So, that would have already have been submitted.
No, I, I'm just thinking, okay, so let's say we're having Fourth of July fireworks or Founder's Day. Obviously, you know who all the people are that you've hired for Founder's Day. But who's to say that some guy or girl is just gonna, not gonna come along, let's just say, and have like balloons or, you know, like those inflatable doors or something?
So, the peddlers.
Yes, so how do we know?
We don't, and so it would be the applicant's responsibility, the event sponsor's responsibility to make sure that all vendors have the required.
But in most particular events, that's the Village of Monroe.
We are the
Right, so we would, we would, we would ask them to leave.
Now, how do you do this as the Village of Monroe, planning the fireworks, putting through your application, you submitting a fifty-dollar thing? So, that's where, is there an option to say, will the board recommend or consider waiving the fee on this part? Is that something that you even place in front of the board?
I would just say that you, if you have a class, a class of a then sponsor, not-for-profit, you're either going to waive it or you're not. You, you know, it can't be, oh, I'll waive it for you, but I'm not going to waive it back to you.
Right.
What's really have to consider, if you look at what was provided to you in your mailboxes for the last three years, ninety-five percent of the people that hold events
Are, right.
Then don't exclude them. It's, it's really up to the board. Simply the board can try this policy out, not exclude, and, you know, see what happens.
Right.
The, the Village of Monroe allows these events to come on, you know, as a, as a, as a, as an opportunity to come into the village, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we've done it year over year. I think last year it was to the tune of almost fifty thousand dollars of an impact.
Mm-hmm.
So, you have to be cognizant of that and going forward, it's only going to be increasing. It's a great village to come to. Great things going on. So, you know, there's a cost of, of all this administration from the time it gets to clerk till it gets to four different departments. There's probably, I would imagine, probably an hour in each department, I'd say, at least. So, you may have six man-hours just administering to this and if there are comments and returns, it's probably double that. Now, it's twelve for fifty bucks. So, okay.
I wouldn't like, I, I don't want to see a single nonprofit event be discouraged because of a fifty-dollar fee. I, that's something that I, the more I think about it, I, and, and looking at this, the last three years of what, what has gone, what we have approved in the village, as long as we are now going through with the twenty percent, you know, I think that's where the largest part of the cost is going to be.
It is, and, and we're going through
Have police, you know, activity on them. So, for those events, that, there are, there are ton that just, the PD cost was zero on it, there was, there was no financial impact, DPW. I, for a fifty-dollar fee, I would not.
So, I asked the, the clerk's office to prepare a, a set of documents, you see, you should have in your packages, two thousand sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. And this is a summary of all the events that have happened in a fiscal year and what, as an example, the PD impact was. Okay? So, I think that kind of gives you a, some sort of a snapshot.
Like I said, if we're collecting the twenty percent on, when, when we do have expenses incurred, is that fifty-dollar fee really, I, I just, is it going to make up for anything? I don't know. I understand that they're administrative fees and I was, I was, I was right there entertaining it with, you know, Dory as far as, you know, what to, what to place a fee on, but you know, if you're going to, I don't know, I just don't want to see anybody discouraged, whether it's our churches, you've got
Yeah. The application, as it's written, excludes not-for-profits from paying the twenty percent, re, up to twenty percent reimbursement, just to keep that in there, so.
Could you?
No, that's, that's not in there.
In our existing event application, that cost addendum to the events application.
Oh, existing.
Right, the existing.
Right, the existing one, but it's not in the
The that section was removed.
It, it was amended, yes. It was amended. We did, we reached out to other municipalities to find out what they do. The response to application fees was varying. There were some who charged a twenty-five dollar per day access fee. There were others who didn't charge anything. However, they recouped in excess of fifty percent of their police and DPW fees. Some very close to a hundred percent of their fees.
Problem though is, a lot of those expensive events are our events. So, we're not recouping police, carnival, the concerts, Fourth of July, all that stuff is the, the events we host. Those are the big dollar amounts. We can't recoup money because we're hosting the event, so.
Do we want to table this some more just so that we can work on it or?
I just, I, I ran into this when I tried to do this a couple of years ago, Neil, you'll remember. And one of my biggest problems was the five K race because that was privately run and I said, we're putting out tremendous manpower for this five K race. And we should, it's the taxpayers' dollars and they shouldn't be footing a bill for somebody who doesn't live in the village, coming in and hosting an event and giving a small portion of it to a, a cause and then the rest of it is because that's what he does for a living, he, he's making a profit off it. And that's what spurred this whole thing for me and it just kept right to that, it just kind of kept falling apart no matter how, how many times I picked up that gavel, it just, I couldn't get it to go out because
Well, well, here's, here's something that I want us to consider and this is going to be very important. One of the biggest changes, in, in addition to the fee schedule, is we have made it so that applications must be submitted sixty days prior to an event so that all of the departments have ample time to review it and approve it. And also so that it has enough time to come to the village board and that we can approve it and then it can go back out. There's also a recommendation in here, or a requirement, I should say, that any application that requires outside approval from the New York State DOT, from the gaming authority, from the liquor authority, those are quite time-consuming to get. And so, those would require ninety days, ninety days prior to the date of the event. If we hold this up anymore, if we hold this application up anymore, approving this, we're holding up that time that we're going to need to approve these. So, I would much rather go ahead and approve this application without any changes to the fee schedule so that we get that timeline set and then we can further discuss the, the, the fees. But we can't, we can't sit here and go back and forth about whether we're going to charge or whether we're not going to charge and hold the rest of this up. We need to make a decision.
I agree, I just don't want to discourage the people like
Then we don't discourage them and we take that, we, we take that out. We take out the twenty percent, we take out the fifty dollars and we leave everything else in. So, is, are we going to take it out and not charge anybody anything? And eat all of the DPW and police expenses or are we going to leave it in?
I, I don't think we should eat it, but I really would consider doing something for, for nonprofit because
But, but then we're not going to charge anybody because we, I mean, if we take a look at these, there's what, one application? these, there's what, one application? Which seems like we're investing an awful lot of time into this for one application.
Okay, what does the board wish to do? Dory?
Well, I, I've already said what, what I would consider doing. I would consider taking out all of those references to fees, and, uh, pushing this through, so that we can get at least the timeline down.
And, and the application.
And, and the application set, yes.
I agree.
So, okay.
So, you can modify it to take out the twenty percent and take out...
The fifty-dollar application fee.
Is there a way to do where if... If there's a PD cost, then, you know, I'm looking at the PD costs, and there's some that are zero, you know?
Right. So, there is no additional cost?
Right, but then there's some...
Other than a fifty-dollar application fee.
Right, yes. And then there's some that are not-for-profit, but we're still having a PD cost. And I know it is lower than our village ones, but seven hundred for this one, um, you know, I know it adds up as you start looking at it. I didn't add it all in my head, but...
I think it's important to recognize that there's a burden to the village for having events, uh, whether they're hours, or they're outside, uh, entities, and it's important to recognize that with that cost, there's an impact. You know, uh, the difference between, um, having it or not having it is about probably, looking at this here, probably of an impact of maybe a couple thousand dollars, but I think it sets the table for, for groups that wanna come in and do their thing, uh, that do have an impact, and most of them have to do with races, and, you know, walks where they're crossing streets for public safety, we have to put on police officers, and I think there's a cost to that. And we're not even asking for the cost, we're not, we're not referring to it. So, when we have a walk, it's a five-k or something like that, and it's, it has an impact of five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents, we're asking for a hundred and ten dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Right. Please, um, is there a way to differentiate between applications for a village-sponsored event versus an outside-sponsored event?
Well, certainly, if the village is sponsoring an event, you aren't gonna charge yourself. Of course, the, the idea is that the village is sponsoring an event because the village board has determined that, you know, it's gonna bring people in the village, they're gonna spend money, so the net benefit to the village, even though you may absorb three thousand dollars worth of PD costs, but the net, you know, impact to the village is actually positive. Now, you could look at all events in the village in that way. Um, I mean, you could differentiate between events that, you know, cha-, you have to pay a fee to go to the event, you know, so that's, you know, a for-profit. But if it's, if it's sponsored by the village, then it...
I mean, are we doing this correctly, where we're filling out the exact same application as somebody else to come in?
Well, you're gathering the information. You still, no matter who's sponsoring the event, you're gonna have to know, or you're gonna want to know, are we gonna need police, or...
Sure.
You know, so, it, it isn't about, you know, should the village fill this event process? No, I mean, you should do the process, and you do it now, I'm sure you do.
I'm just wondering if there's a separate, another way that we should be doing this, instead of...
No, I, I don't see a separate way. I mean, it seems to me that the idea of this is to gather all the information that's gonna be necessary to have a straight event, whether, it doesn't matter who is, is putting the event on, or sponsoring the event. The only question is, do you pay a fee or not? Do you share the cost or not? The village, you're not gonna take your own taxpayer money to pay back your taxpayers, you know, it's, it's like, no, that's like double the thing. So, the, there, the village itself is exempt. Now, do you wanna carry that forward to everyone else who does an event in the village? That's a decision you have to make.
Hmm.
I mean, I would suggest maybe a hardship review, or something like that, but now you're getting into a very, you know, discretionary, very decision that's probably not worth it. The other thing you could do is you could, um, I don't know if this makes any sense, but, um, certainly, there's a cost to do the application, there's, there's a cost to physically do the application, to send it out. Fifty dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money for anybody to pay if that's all you're paying. I suppose you could, um, ask for a contribution towards the cost of PD when it's necessary for these non-village events, and you suggest twenty percent, I mean...
So, changing it...
It might be an interesting way to figure out whether people are willing to pay or not, are willing to, you know, because a lot of times, if, if you say, look, it's gonna cost us three thousand dollars, we'd love a contribution of twenty percent, or whatever you can bear. Maybe everyone gives you the twenty percent, and you see, well, it's not really a big problem, that will, it is a little blah. It, it seems silly, but it's one way to look at it.
So, could we then, in that, in that respect, could we then change the wording of it to a recommended contribution of twenty percent?
I, I, my personal feeling is you leave the twenty percent alone, and you make a decision on the application fee, if you think that's, you know, for the nonprofits and the smaller ends of it, that maybe they need to have some kind of relief from, you know, fifty to twenty-five, or something like that. But the twenty percent, I, to me, and for me, I think it's important that we recognize that there is a cost, and, uh, that we not, uh, abdicate that in a way, you know, I think it's important that, uh, you set the table now.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at the events, if you look at the summaries, I don't know if you have your copy there.
Mm-hmm. I do.
All right. Uh, it said a moment ago, most of these events are ours, some aren't, and the ones that aren't have impacts, uh, as an example of, um, forty-two dollars.
(laughing).
Um... Forty-two dollars. Forty-two eighty-six. Eighty-four, eighty-five, twenty. Seventy-one dollars and ten cents. So, but let's, let's...
I don't even have some further to say.
Well...
That, twenty percent, this is what PD was? That's the best of PD?
Yeah.
So, in that case there, right, it'd be one thirty-eight sixty-six.
I guess the question is, are they gonna go somewhere else for a hundred and twenty-eight? Maybe.
Right.
I mean, if other municipalities also have a similar policy, we have...
We have the most lenient among, among the...
With this.
And, and in my conversations with these other municipalities, they did state that when they were dealing with youth organizations, right, they tried to make it so that the cost would be as little as possible. So, if they were planning an event, they would try to make it so, they would encourage them to use a path that would require as little police support and as little DPW support as possible, so that the cost to them was not excessive, you know, but if they did want to plan something that included closing off a roadway, you know, that's, they would then be responsible for twenty percent of that cost.
Right, but if they didn't go into a road...
Oh, well, no, they, right, in those, in those municipalities, they would be responsible for a significant reimbursing up to a hundred percent of the police cost.
Right. But if they don't cross a roadway, or they don't...
Then they incur no cost.
Of course, so that's not a conversation.
So, right, so, for instance, the, the, um, the scarecrow hangings, and, um, you know, the, the pinwheels for peace, I mean, they would essentially incur no cost at all whatsoever. We're really talking about anything that involves closing off Milpon Parkway, closing off Lake Street, closing off Stage Road, or, or any, any of that. Collection of garbage, you know, if, if they can make an, an arrangement with the DPW where they take away all their garbage, and we don't have to do anything, we're not gonna have to do anything.
Okay, let's wrap this one up.
I'll make the motion to accept it the way it is.
Okay.
Yeah?
Second?
Yeah.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order of business, Stop DWI Program Service Agreement, trustee who?
That's me. Hold on, I gotta find it now.
Can you pack it?
No, I know, it's here. I just moved it out of the way. In a memo from Chief Mel Chiari, he writes that the Monroe Police Department has been awarded funding through the Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Safety Program. The contract participation required for the full year begins on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, through January first, two thousand twenty. The first period is from March fifteenth, twenty nineteen, through May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, for a total not to exceed two thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars per forty hours. We will be notified of the allotted funds per hours for subsequent enforcement periods at a later date. Uh, we need to approve, um, this, accepting this, we need to resolve to accept this grant, and we also need to resolve to have the mayor be the designated official to execute the contract. I put that in the form of a motion.
We'll make the motion. Second.
Oh, we did.
Oh, I made the motion, and then you seconded.
Oh, I thought you, oh, sorry, yeah, I was seconding.
Can you call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Okay, event application, multiple sclerosis society charity walk. Resolved, the board of trustees approved the event application submitted by Joseph Palisi of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, New York, to use the commuter parking lot on Milpon Parkway and the walking paths in Crane Park to host their annual walk on Sunday, May fe- fifth, two thousand nineteen, from four AM, four AM?
Yes.
Okay. Four AM to three PM. Approval includes permission to set up the event on Saturday, May fourth, from eight to three PM, from three PM to nine PM. Setup will include tents, tables, portable toilets, and dumps to sign off on the event. Application has been made both by the building and police departments, with the building department stating that there is to be no cooking under the food tent. The event will be supervised by the police department with an estimated cost of additional police services in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six dollars, which includes one officer for six hours and an overtime rate of seventy-one per hour to assist with pedestrian courses on Milpon. I need a motion to accept this event?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Wow, what do they, what do they do at four AM?
I think that's more their setup, their setup.
That's their setup time?
I think so, they start pretty early, I think it's setup.
Wow.
Okay, so, do we have a...
Aye. Are we calling the question?
Okay. Deb?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Second event application, uh, event application submitted by Mr. Timothy Metz, resident at two thirty-six High Street, requesting permission to open his home to the Girl Scouts to visit Rest Haven, experience blindness, on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, from four PM to seven PM. Sign off on the event application has been made by, by both, or to both, or by both the building and police departments, and the police department will monitor the event with sea line officers for any potential traffic issues, with no additional expense estimated. I need a motion that we accept this. Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, uh, next business, authorization to hire accounting consultant. Whereas the Village of Monroe hereby finds in terms that is in the best interest of the village residents and taxpayers to periodically review internal processes and procedures to determine whether improvements could be made to better effectuate village purposes, and whereas the mayor has recommended to the board that because of the village's fiscal oversight of the general accounting practices, those processes should be reviewed first, and whereas the mayor has interviewed accounting firms that have experience in municipal finance and has recommended the accounting firm of RBT CPAs LLP be hired to accomplish this review. Now, therefore, be resolved that the village board of trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with RBT CPAs LLP for the express purpose of conducting a limited independent review of the village's accounting practices for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars to be allocated from budget line A one three two five point four five zero zero, and is subject to review of the agreement by the village's attorney. I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, introduction of the local law, local law four, override tax cap levy and scheduling of the public hearing. Be resolved that an introductory local law titled Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit Establishing, or Established by the General Municipal Law three dash C is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the board of trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the board of trustees, and be further resolved that the board of trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at, or on March fifth, two thousand nineteen, and be further revol- resolved that the village clerk shall publish or course to be published in public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than five days prior to here to, there to. I need a motion?
Did we, did we state a time?
Seven PM.
Seven PM?
I'll make the motion. Do you want it to be seven PM?
I do, I don't want, uh, any early people commute, let's just leave it at seven.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Debbie make the motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Introduction of Local Law Number Five, two thousand nineteen, amendments to Chapter forty-three, Vehicle and Traffic, Section forty-three dash four, North Main to Freeland Street, and scheduling a public hearing. Be resolved that an introductory public, local law, excuse me, titling, uh, titled, amending Chapter forty-three of the Village Code Ethics, excuse me, Vehicles and Traffic is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the board of trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the board of trustees, and be further resolved that the board of trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, Monroe, New York, at, we did the seven, so, seven fifteen? On March fifth, I should, right?
The other one was March fifth, yes.
Yeah. Be further resolved that the village clerk shall publish or course to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than five days prior there to. I need a motion?
I'll make the question.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any questions?
No.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Introduction, Local Law Number Six, two thousand nineteen, amending Chapter sixty-four alarm systems and scheduling of the public hearing. Be resolved that an introductory local law titled Amending Chapter sixty-four of the Village Code Alarm Systems is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer and before the board of trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the board of trustees, and be further resolved that the board of trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at seven...
Mr. Mayor, you may want to not do those, the last two public hearings on March fifth, you may wanna move into the following meeting, since you've got two public hearings already scheduled. So, seven PM, but on...
The nineteenth.
Seven PM on... Seven PM on, uh, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Be it further resolved that the village clerk shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than five days prior there to. I need a motion? I need a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Introduction of Local Law Seven, Amending Chapter One, General Provisions and Scheduling of Public Hearing. Be resolved that the introductory local law entitled Amending Chapter One of the Village Code of General Provisions is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at- I would think seven fifteen, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. And be it further resolved that the village clerk shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the vil- the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than five days prior there to. I need a motion?
I'll-
I need a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Mister Mayor, you just might wanna remind the public that they, that copies of these local laws have to put on the village board's desk. They've got past copies of them, so anyone who wants to see them can get a copy from the village clerk. And they're posted on-
Thank you. Okay. Anything further for anybody here? Trustees have anything?
Um, I did, oh, sorry.
No, I don't think I have anything.
Um, well, I did see you at the Smiths' Cove Park Winter Festival, which was definitely a lot of fun. I love our park. I've been going there since I was a kid. Um, there's just a lot of great programs. I saw our clerk there also. Um, and also, uh, Monroe Woodbury High School had an amazing Prism concert. I didn't really even know what it was going to be, but I ran into a friend of mine in, um, the music department. There was symphonic bands, and I don't know all the different names, but chamber choir and all the singers, and it really was amazing. If you ever get a chance to go, it's once a year, you should go see the Prism concert at the high school. That's all I have.
Next one? Trustee Ali? I did have one thing I just wanted to bring up. Uh, we had, in our last session, discussed the hiring of a, um, of a part-time code enforcement officer? Okay, so, uh, we're gonna be moving forward with that, but we just have to speak with council in that regard. Evidently, what we adopted to do, uh, isn't on our local code. So, uh, we just need to just clear that up and then, and then get it going, whatever we need to do. Okay?
Call me.
Yeah, yeah, well, we could, yep, absolutely. I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention, that we were firm believers in it, and it's needed, and we're gonna move forward with it. Okay, uh, council, anything in your end?
Yeah, why not? Absolutely.
So before we begin public comment, I just wanna recognize our Boy Scouts here, what troop are you with? Four forty? Is there anything that you'd like to speak about this evening? I'd like to give you some floor time, if you'd like. Can you tell me why you're here tonight? Can you come on up to the mic, please? You're the man. Come on up. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Uh, my name's Noah Scars. I'm a Life Scout currently from Troop Four Forty. So, the overall reason we're here, there's two merit badges in the Boy Scouting Program. Both of them require to achieve the rank of Eagle, that is Communications and Citizenship in the Community. Both of them have a requirement in which you are to attend a, a meeting within your town, your city, or, in our case, the meeting for the Board of Trustees. And for Communications, um, I believe one of the requirement, I don't know the exact requirement for Communications, but I'm in the Citizenship and the, and the Community badge, and my requirement is to write down one of the issues that was presented, one of, and, um, an issue where there is two stances to take, and, uh, take one of the, take a side and make, um, kinda like a debate argument statement. Uh, I was taking notes on the, um, whole event application fee.
Mm-hmm. That was a good one to take notes on.
That's very cool. And you're heading toward your Eagle Scout?
Uh, I hope to achieve it by the end of this year.
Awesome. That's really great. Anybody else in your troop here tonight, working toward that? What are your projects? What are you doing for your Eagle Scout project? Have you gotten that? Have you had your review yet?
Um, I, I'm not, I'm not there discussing-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh-huh. Very good, good. I'm a big fan, so, anything you need? Yes, yes, absolutely. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming up, too.
Thank you, Noah.
Good job.
Oh, we have another hand. Come on up. Yes, you do.
See how that works? First guy steps up, and then they all start coming. This is it. Beautiful.
Sure.
So, I understood the fifty dollar application fee. I don't remember what the twenty percent was for again.
That's the vig you pay to come here.
Oh.
I'm not kidding, you know.
Many, many of the, um, events that we have here in the Village of Monroe require, um, the services of our police department and our Department of Public Works to keep the streets closed, to maintain safety, and to keep it clean. And that usually costs us money, uh, sometimes in overtime, and, um, what we're talking about is asking the applicant to share that cost with us uh, by paying twenty percent of what those police department and, and DPW costs would be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to comment that these young men are very well spoken.
Yes. Very good. Awesome. Good leaders. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, let's open it up to the rest of the public. Any public comment, please? Please?
How you doing?
Glad you stated your name, sir.
My name is Ross Maselli. I'm the Executive Director of the South Orange Family YMC. Uh, I just wanna thank you guys yesterday publicly for coming in and for taking advantage of our provided tour. I really appreciate it. Uh, the Y welcomes you for more dialogue. Uh, I have to admit, I thought there would've been more questions, you know, uh, on the technical stuff, but, you know, I, I do respect the fact that you guys are still doing your homework, and I welcome you to come back, uh, at your earliest convenience again, and, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah.
And just one more thing for these guys. You guys are doing great work in the community, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, please? Sir?
I used to be in Troop Four Forty.
Were you really?
Yes, I was.
No kidding? Good for you.
Back in the day.
Guys, you hear that? Troop Four Forty alum, right here, and a former mayor.
Got another one right here.
Here you go. How cool is this?
That's why they speak so well.
Just, uh, two things I wanna bring up. One, Monroe Trail Park.
Yep.
Sent you a text on it.
Yep.
I encourage you to take a ride through the Trail Park. Take a ride down the end of Calvin Terrace. This has been ongoing for many, many years. The reason why I moved off of Calvin Terrace, it is, it looks like a third world country, and it's horrible. Enough is enough. That, that landlord, the property owner, he's a slumlord. What more can I say? That needs to be cleaned up. It's a disgrace in there. That's what I'm gonna say on that. Last thing I have is, um, you had a, um, you had an employee that just recently retired here, John Linderman, had over thirty years in the Village of Monroe. Two different times, we had DPW superintendents leave, and John came in and filled the gap both times. He has since retired, and it saddens me that I haven't seen any acknowledgement from this village board on that man's thirty-plus years of service here. And I think that's, he deserves, he at least deserves that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the public? Okay. I need someone to make a motion that we go into the executive session regarding pending litigation.
Make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. Have a great night.